All right, if you wish, please join me for the Lord's Prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, roll call. Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the agenda and the addendum?
I'll move.
Second. Thank you, we are trying to get everything hired and things came in late. Like, get them on there, we gotta get this done.
Quick process this time.
Roll call. Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
All right, we'll go to administrative reports and I don't think we have anybody.
I told them they didn't have to come, some were thinking about it.
Okay, very good. All right, we have a public participant, Mr. Carl Childers. Called me, couple of weeks ago we spoke, and he owns some ground that joins our property up in the woods somewhere on the backside, correct?
Correct.
And, yeah, and it's, so what he's, what he is interested in is maybe, it's a sliver ground, and literally, he doesn't care about the mineral rights, so it's not gonna affect anything we've signed, but it would help him a lot if he could purchase that piece. And I told him there's a lot to this. I said, because you gotta have the port authority involved, and, but, I want him to come and talk.
Yeah.
And, you know, give us-
Did you bring out the layout?
He brought, yes, yeah. So Carl's here to- And he said we can keep these, so we can make copies of these.
This is the little sliver?
Yeah.
It says it's like two point, point two four acre.
Oh, is it that much?
Quarter of an acre.
Yeah.
And does it lay right up against our- Uh, road in the- Okay. Now, where we just had our borrow pit at? On the borrow, that's not, I'm looking at the wrong place. This is in Spencer Township.
Okay.
Covison Road.
Oh, this is school property clear out there?
Yeah.
I was thinking it was up here on the backside.
Oh, okay, where, so where are we at? Okay, this is, uh, this is Cobal Lane. Okay. And it comes off of Covison. And it's a, it's right along the road up here. Okay. Like I said, it's point two acres, two point acres.
This is your house here?
I think it's a little more than that.
How do we answer that?
This is your house here?
Uh, this is your house here?
I think there was an old school somewhere around.
Old school somewhere?
It's a real steep hill right here.
When they consolidated all the schools. I think we now own down here in six years' time.
I'll take you right, write your number down here and I can give you a call. It is a process with anything, you know, say you-
So, see, I was, I'm sorry, I was thinking it was up here somewhere on the back of the, you know, but this is a piece of ground that Carl said, it's probably been in the district forever, but it would help him so much.
Yeah, well, we can work something out somehow.
You know, I don't know if, if a situation like this, then of course you gotta have the offer to all in public or something, but, I told Carl come and talk, instead of me talking and, you know.
Well, we can, we can-
I don't know what it could benefit anybody else.
He said he'd take us up and show us, but he said it does not benefit-
He had called me a little bit.
I took your, I don't know what happened with the stuff, I probably don't know where it went.
So I get into the hay field.
So, if you, if you would own this, you wouldn't have to go around it, you could just go through it to the hay field?
Down the road.
You probably could have been a reporter since just-
Like I said, it's all about me here on this.
No, listen, there is taxes on there, you know. Yeah, and we're here to, you know, we're, we're not here to, if we just hoard land or anything, and it's something that we obviously has no use.
Yeah, that's true.
And they tore it down.
Probably on one roof.
Yeah. Okay.
There was a lot of dudes.
I'll, I'll find out what's-
Yeah.
This is your home number?
Yes, sir. And I probably should have told you guys, but I kind of slipped my line, but this is the way to handle it. No, no, this is the way to handle it, that's what I told you, I said, listen, I want you to come and talk to all of us because- Carl, you know this guy, right? You know his dad, well, shake your hand, he won't. No, Devon will get on that, Carl. And, uh, we'll do our best. We'll do our best to find out what we can and see what we can do.
Yep, we'll work on it.
That's even more interesting that it's not joining anything here on the main campus, because- Yeah. No, it's, good information. Hey, we could use a couple million extra dollars. I appreciate you coming, I appreciate you coming, thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll be back in touch, okay, somebody.
Thank you very much. All right.
We'll figure something out.
Well, yeah, talk to whatever, because-
We'll, we'll dig into options.
He's a good guy and he wouldn't, he wouldn't be asking us, it's like, it's out in the middle of nowhere.
Right, and it's a bank.
Yeah, and it's a bank, and he said, listen, I would love to, it would help me a lot, so, we'll see what-
We can look into that.
See what we come up with, okay. I didn't overstep then?
No, no, no.
All right, so we're gonna, that's it on public participants, we'll move on to treasures report, Brandon?
All right, I got a lot of stuff, it's just a lot of, it's just this time of year, but approval of the minutes from the May meeting, approval of the May financial report, approval of the now certificates, um, we are renewing our health insurance and health dental and vision insurance, new changes to the coverages for the carriers. Um, there will be rate increases this year. Fortunately, last year we didn't have any, but this year approximately about ten point two five percent. But for health insurance, which is kind of how it is nowadays. Uh, letter F is, we're also renewing our liability insurance at the Ohio School Plan. Uh, we had chopped it out and they still are our best bet. Just under a five percent increase for this year. Um, G is the insurance rates I had already touched on. H, uh, basically, right now with the building project, we just kind of need to increase how much money we can have on deposit of peoples. We're making a lot of transactions. But again, it's just a five-year agreement, of course, they're the only bank in the district, so, you know, it's kind of an easy decision there. I, uh, this was just something they had recommended, as a public entity, we have to collateralize all of our funds, in case, you know, peoples would shut down. So basically, this is just a way where we can kind of make more money, um, off of our money. And, you know, it's all FDIC insured rather than having to be collateralized, so it's easier for them, it's better for us. J, uh, again, this is just kind of another regulatory issue. Red Tree, which is where our money is for building project, debt proceeds. We have to pay the fees now to US Bank, they can't pay them, so it's just basically, we're still paying, we're just paying them direct, instead of indirect now, and that will go into effect July first. K, I have got a few questions on this. Basically, um, the Department of Labor came up with a new rule. Uh, for several years, the salary amount, I mean, they've, they've had a rule, but they've increased it quite a bit, so now anyone that makes eight hundred and forty-four dollars a week or less, um, that's salaried, if they're not a teacher in some sort of academic role, you have to, um, pay them overtime. So basically, the easiest way is just to convert them over to hourly employees, that's mainly just gonna affect our building secretaries. Actually, I think that's the only positions that that will affect, so basically, they'll be eligible.
Who's that, Brandon?
The building secretaries. So they'll be eligible for, um, overtime or comp time, um, a time and a half, and if they would work over forty hours um, in a week, and that's only gonna be basically probably parent-teacher conference weeks, or probably your only weeks there for that. Um, and then L and M, that's just your routine year-end budgetary amendments. And N is approving the temporary budget for fiscal year twenty-five. Like, that's it.
I am gonna have to ask that we separate items D and E off, and I apologize.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we never even talk, we went through, uh, D, E, and G.
Right. Yes, D, E, and G. So you wanna do those first?
Sure.
All right, do I have a motion for items D, E, and G?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Right, uh, Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
abstain.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
I'm sorry about that, I, we never-
We didn't, we didn't think of any, so I'm glad you called it. All right, now we'll go back to items. Uh, A, B, C, F, H, I, J, K, L, M, and N.
Good job.
Do I have a motion for those items?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes. And just so everybody here know what we just had to do, I purchased my healthcare through the school, and so I can't vote on, that's what that was about, so.
Yeah, he had nothing to do with the real or anything, so.
All right, uh, we're moving on to standing committees. Uh, we got policy, Matt and Mike.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time.
Athletic, Mike and Brad?
Nothing. Shaq looks nice.
Yeah, very nice, thanks, yeah.
Oh, I did have some guys ask me, and I haven't been up there, but we don't have restroom facilities in it.
Yeah.
Oh, we do?
Not public restroom.
They're not public, just for the school, okay.
Right, for that building.
Okay, and I, I hadn't been up there, and that's, that's mindful, but, okay. Uh, legislate-
Showers in them, but we didn't put a whole bank of showers, 'cause you can't get kids to shower after sporting events.
We had to back in the day, didn't we?
It's, you can't, you can't make them catch them, like, they can be covered in mud and that down.
We had a fitness program, uh, that they picked certain students and you had to go up in the first period of every day, and we, you know, worked out. And, uh, you had to take a shower back in the day, that's telling my age, but-
Yeah, there's two bathrooms and two showers.
Okay, uh, legislative, Mike?
Uh, no, the only, uh, the only thing is the governor's, um, wanting, uh, each school district to have a policy on cell phone usage and uh, stuff like that, so I think that's something we need to look at.
Yeah, we're kind of a step ahead, we were discussing it already, but, yeah. Didn't know about that. It's one of those things, you know, yeah, everybody's gonna do this, but then he left a really broad, you know, but-
Basically, it's up to the individual, um, curriculums.
Each school district.
Yeah, but we, everybody has to have some kind of policy.
Yeah, you have to have something.
It's a lot more work for you, isn't it?
Nah, we'll see, I don't know. We got a lot of the legwork done, but-
Need to freshen it up.
Uh, Mid East, Mike?
Uh, the other thing I have is, uh, Mackenzie Korniski from Meadowbrook. She advanced to the National Skills USA Competition in Atlanta, uh, past week. She, uh, had to qualify through the highest skills USA state competition, which was held in Columbus in April, so very proud of that young lady making it to state. Mid East had their biggest contingent ever go, they had seven, and, um, one of the teachers is a Meadowbrook grad, Cam Summers, so, um, he, he took his, uh, design, uh, computer design team down. Uh, a, a couple of the kids, um, no Meadowbrook kids, uh, he hasn't had a Meadowbrook kid yet in that program. But, um, so we're really proud of Mackenzie and proud of Cam as well.
Yeah. Okay, nothing on insurance negotiations. Uh, building grounds, that's me and Darren. Yeah, everything looks good, I, I've had a couple concerns, so I'll address it tonight. Devin, people was called about things looking a little rough, like eight twenty-one, and there's reasons, you know, we can't mow and we can't do certain things, the state has kind of restricted.
Yeah, as soon as we can, we'll get back in, like, by the road, where, you know, they're changing right of ways, and, you know, there's things like that we can't get into at times, but they let us know when we can and we jump back in. And the township and everybody's been great about coming and helping when we get in those vines, and that, you know, they've got heavier equipment, and, yeah.
So if you guys wonder, it's just because there's some restrictions on us right now due to wetland issues, correct, kinda?
Well, there's, some of it is, yeah, some of it is, some of it's just that's a construction, so, you know, but-
Okay, but that's-
But thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah. Uh, audit, I don't know of anything, right?
Yeah, be here before we know it.
Community outreach, is Matt, Darren?
I just think it's important to acknowledge, you know, we lost Bill Albright this week, who is a big part of, uh, the Byzville community. I served with him on city council for ten years, and, um, his wife worked for Rolling Hills, and, you know, that's a big loss to the community, so.
Calling ours a gasser tonight, yeah, five day, five day. Yeah, Bill's a very good man, I'm gonna miss him. Uh, Devin, anything, business advisory?
That's all kind of shut down for the year, well, for the school year.
Old business, then?
I got some updates, nothing major, but, uh, you know, important things, good things. Uh, we are meeting, John and I, actually Sam's, uh, going on vacation, but we are meeting with the company on the field, baseball field updates on Monday, you know, I'm not sure what that looks like or how far we're gonna go, but, uh, we're definitely looking at fixing some things there, largely drainage and getting water to the field and those things, so you're gonna see a lot of improvements there as the year goes on. It's probably gonna be a multi-year plan, you know, um, but, well, that's, that's our focus right now at Athletics, not so Shacks though. I sent something to you guys, but we are negotiating as we speak the gas and oil lease here, and I expect that to move pretty quick. We kept seventy-five percent of the mineral rights from Beech Grove when we sold it. So, and of course, we still hold the mineral rights here, so there's going to be something out of that, uh, sent definitely once, so we're just kind of going through the steps and jumping through the hoops right now. Uh, we also, and it's a little premature, but I think it's gonna happen, we are most likely going to get a huge grant to add coding and IT as a pathway at Meadowbrook High School. It'll kind of be two years out, and it kind of fell right, because, you know, we're hiring John tonight, and I left an opening, so we're gonna hire an IT person, an IT teacher in there. Um, and this grant's gonna pretty much pay for everything and for us to train somebody, so that's, that's exciting. It's also the third highest field right now, which is kind of what we're basing these pathways on. You know, when we, we looked at pathways, that's kind of what we go off of, along with what Mid East doesn't offer. So, that's exciting, hope I'm announcing that next month. And finally, forgot to throw it in your packet, but I handed it out. Allerton Hill sent a communication report, you know, the update from January to June. Kind of impressive, I won't read you all of it, but like, I'm not a huge social media person, so this stuff kind of really blows me away. So they set up a Facebook account, a Twitter account, and an Instagram account, right? Since January, um, nine thousand five hundred and eight total viewers following the profiles on those three accounts. Four hundred and fifty-one posts made by Allerton Hill about the district, kids, et cetera. One point two million impressions, the number of times your content was displayed to a user. Eighty-one point eight thousand engagements, that's how many times in those six months, um, users engaged with the content, like, liked it, commented, shared, clicked, just mind-boggling, isn't it? Like, I wouldn't have guessed those numbers, I'd go as much more in-depth if you go in, broad majority happens Facebook. But it also goes through some of the biggest ones of the year. This did come out before we announced hiring Marcy Murphy, so that one's not on here, it probably would have been the top one, because that blew up. But, you know, it's, it's interesting, so if you have a chance, let's agree that it's worth every penny. That's all I've got on it?
Oh, I, I do want to add the heritage project.
Oh, yes, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, you can jump in whenever.
Oh.
Uh, one of the things we, we're doing here in the district is, uh, we've started a heritage project in order to tie the past, our, our past and our, our future in the schools. So there's a committee, a list that we're meeting. Right now, we're actively looking for memorabilia from any of the old, uh, village and township schools. We're asking for pictures, we're asking for memorabilia, uh, anything that will come in, so we can use it to, uh, tie into the, uh, use it to help decorate and educate in the new, uh, school facility. So, um, that's one of the things, so you're gonna see stuff coming across. You know, we're asking for pictures of Byzville, we're asking for pictures of Buffalo, and it, we're doing it in a controlled way, so it's been, uh, Byzville for the past couple of weeks, and then we'll move on to the next one. That way, uh, we're not overwhelmed with it. So if you have something, uh, if you have ideas, talk to Devon or I, and, uh, we'll go from there.
Yeah, I do, Wallace Hill, Mike and I started talking a couple of years ago, and we left portions of the building undecorated, so we could get things like this, you know, have some pictures made and decorate part of the new building with the old community schools and township schools, and, you know.
I, uh, speaking on that, I know a guy that's got, uh, I believe it's Pleasant City's final fourteen? Okay, not the state?
Okay.
Uh, there, he's got his trophy.
Now, see, that's the kind of stuff we're looking, and actually, I wanted to talk to you about your uncle and see what was left in that boat, if we could get in there.
Yeah, yeah, he wouldn't have any problem at all, but it's, it's in bad, bad shape.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
All right, that it then?
That's it for that part.
All right, we're gonna do what, you get to do supercast?
Yep, keep talking. So, bunch of hires under A, a few I wanna highlight that are either here or a big deal for us. Tyler Baker, intervention, been with us for quite a while, he is now officially a teacher in the district, so, big deal, glad he came today. Well, that's true, he could get voted down.
We're separated.
The next one down the thread, this one of the late additions, Zach Rebar. Bear with me, 'cause I only met him once so far, but it's horrible finding a physical science teacher.
That was a long time, couple of months, I think, yeah.
And not only did we find one, when we found a good one, we're really happy about, so, you know, that's great. The big news all over town, John Jones, he's also here, is going to be our athletic director, assuming you vote yes.
Maybe we need to separate him.
And Lisa Rowe as well, who is also here, who has worked in the district for years and is now officially a teacher in the district, assuming you vote yes. So, um, dude, oh, and I missed one. I, I've done that to you twice. I don't think I marked you when you came in. Jennifer Miller, I'm sorry, who we are very lucky to have, coming from Washington Courthouse, right? I remember Mullen, the high state player, that's how I remember her. Bringing a ton of experience, as well as her kids, um, you know. So very excited.
Thank you, awesome, yeah.
Sorry, I ignored you twice. I was talking about her.
Yes, currently in the transition to move, um, unfortunately, our fair is in July, um, so as soon as the fair's over on the twentieth, we'll be making the final move to the area, but, um, definitely excited to be here, and I, I appreciate the opportunity.
We're, we're glad to have you, I mean, that's, that's awesome.
The official team has just improved.
Yeah, very impressive, resume, yeah.
Very good.
Good work to you.
They did well. They all know, they did very well, so we were pleased to, to, you know, bless it happen.
B, or the retirements, and honestly, you know, I'd like to talk about a lot of these, but I'm not gonna put you through that, but, you know, a lot of big names that have been here for a long time.
She's retired.
Nope. Lot of big names that have been here for a long time on that list. And buyout's great in a lot of ways, and it's rough in some others, but, you know, yeah, big list.
I'm never gonna-
See, hard to signal anybody out, 'cause there's so many good names, but-
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Uh, C, except the resignation, I got a couple of calls on this this week. We hired, that's all right, we hired Doug as, as, uh, the high school assistant principal last month, so I had to have him resign as the middle school assistant principal this month. Uh, Lacey Ubank's leave of absence, uh, approved the reduction of force of following positions, those were those two three-hour cook jobs. Yeah, they have other positions in the district, but, you know, they're, we're cutting those three-hour positions, and that's been known for a while, but getting it in the, in the paperwork. Agreement with High Valley ESC, uh, the K five student handbook, six twelve, it will be coming, but with all the changes there, I told them they could wait a month. You know, they're just getting into them themselves. Uh, agreement with our subsystem. I, memorandum of understanding with our HVA. J is also a memorandum of understanding, that has to do with the buyout. Uh, K, an annul of all spring coaches. L, approve the tournament service vouchers to a district administrator for those dates listed. M, approve the food and service program proposal from the nutrition group as presented. N, the service agreement between Best Life Therapy, um, which is our speech company, correct? Yep. Pre the East District Ohio Educational Service Center contract for twenty-five. Columbia Gas of Ohio eight to construction agreement, they have to move, uh, they have to move some things for us to continue the building project, that's why that's on there. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit more about that here later, but Q and R are the continued public hearings for Rob, for Todd Bates. Public hearings hereby being given in accordance to the Higher Revise Code, section thirty-three oh seven point three five three, by the Rolling Hills Board of Education, that Robert Bates, who was previously employed by the board as a teacher and retired from said position, is seeking reemployment with the board in the same or similar position as a re-employed retiree. At this time, the public is welcome to address the board on this matter, should you have concerns.
I know his mother passed today.
She did.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
No concerns on that, good. Or, that's, that goes back to that stuff we have to do, I'm sorry, G.
Can we pull in and discuss it further?
Yep.
Thank you.
R, approve Rolling Hills Local School District energy optimism, they, they redid the lighting at Brook. And that is a great, that's one of those green grants, they come in and change all the lighting, update all of it, and then we pay it back out of the savings we get from it, so that actually doesn't-
The parking lot looks much, much better now, I mean, you know how dark it was over there now, so.
Yeah, so, and, and it doesn't cost us anything until we start receiving the money back out of it.
They're a great company, yeah, that's for sure.
They are, yeah. S, approve following overnight trip, Ohio Valley Christian Assembly band camp in Palm Roy, Ohio. And T, extend service renewal for the twenty-four, twenty-five year for a staff member there, fifteen days, questions on those outside of M, which we were pulling, it was M, right?
Yeah, it was M.
I do have a question, if I can find it, I think it was going down.
I know, there was a lot.
The ESC, so, we see in Ohio Valley, we're working with both.
We work with a multiple ESCs.
Okay, 'cause I know at one point, we only did, so we don't just work with one anymore, we were allowed a contract.
Changed a lot now.
Yeah, it has, we, and really, a lot, most people are doing this, we have a contract with the Central Ohio to provide our primary services, but then you can buy specific services off other ones if it's better, so.
Okay.
Uh, we like Ohio Valley's preschool system much better, so we purchased the preschool system off of them.
Used to be, you had to go with one or the other.
Stick completely with them, yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of changed, and actually, they got them out of them. Yeah, you know, it, it, it creates more.
You even split your state A till now, I mean, it's all, you know, it's-
Darren and I went through this, we tabled, tabled, tabled members several years ago, your dad was involved.
They still want you to side with them, they want, you know, 'cause they get more money if you're contracted specifically with them, but, yeah.
But that sounds like it's a benefit for the school districts.
We're really in the best possible spot.
They have to be competitive, now that's the whole-
That's, I told one of them that the other day, so we, with a foot in both boats, you know, we can pick and choose what's best for us, so.
Well, when I first got on the board, I was like, we're paying an ESC a million dollars a year. I'm like, no, we're not gonna do that. And it's like, well, if you're under sixteen thousand, uh,
Students.
Students, you have to, you have to be enrolled to one or any. Okay, that, that answers that. Are we just gonna pull in then?
Yes, how about we vote on A through T excluding M?
That's cool.
Can we do that? Just give it separate, Brad, everybody's good, it's everything else.
Yep.
Which, that's a lot of stuff.
Motion for everything but M.
Yeah. You made the-
Darren made the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna talk about M later, do you wanna?
No, we can talk about it now, if you want.
It's a contraction, discuss it.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about it right now.
Okay, Brad, go ahead, I'm, I'm interested to hear what you said, I know nothing about.
Well, I don't know enough about it to feel good about voting for it at this point, so I'd like to, to learn a little bit more about what, what the position holds, what it is.
I think that's fair. I mean, I, I, you know, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta agree with you. It's like, I, I, I spoke to a guy today. Uh, I went in McDonald's and a gentleman approached me about, about it and I said, listen, how I look at it is, you know, I gotta depend on, we have to depend on Devin and Brandon. And if they make a decision that doesn't work, then at some point, as a board, we step in and make changes. But I do respect Brad's concern. Uh, we spoke a little bit there a little while ago and he's like, well, you know, I guess your history is through where you worked. They have a food uh, service company that, and he said that they basically don't do a very good job.
I would, I would like to.
You lose the personalization.
Well, I'd like to comment because I think the state prison is a different one, because we know the governor was under investigation for putting that in and that the, you know what I mean, name stocks in that company, if I remember correctly. Not the current governor, the previous one, right? And that's where all that came from, that private company. So that was like, I think that might be different. Everything on this, I think is exciting. Because, you know, you're talking about more choices for kids. You're talking about fruits readily available. You're talking about more food options. And you're talking, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there was a chef coming in to teach how to cook from scratch a better product. And you know, this is an area I work in. So to me, it's exciting to me because I feel like when I was a kid, I loved school lunch and I don't think the same things are being done now. Like, you know, I'm not saying it's anyone's fault, but I, I'm glad we're taking a look and making some adjustments, to be honest.
Brandon can speak better on this.
Brandon, it's a huge savings.
Yeah, I can tell you. Nine out of twelve grades for free lunch last year and we lost three hundred thousand dollars in the kitchen.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest, the biggest thing in Ohio, it started in Pennsylvania, but oh, it's, it's definitely in this part of the state now is every other district around us is contracted out. So what happens when we go and bid, um, is our bids always come in higher than, than their individual school bids because they're a large thing. You know, there's, there's like three big companies that do this. You essentially, um, the nutrition group is who does all the schools, you know, adjacent to us and um, I mean, we'll, we will never be able to be competitive with our, with our food costs as the size of our district. I mean, that's just, you know, the, the fact of it, you know, if we, if um, if they hadn't, you know, taken over, you know, essentially, you know, I mean, it might be a little bit different, but it's also the reason, the biggest, the nicest thing about the nutrition group too, like you said, as you talked about, like, you know, not wanting to give up control is at the end of the day, if the board or Devin or someone says, hey, that's not how we, you know, we don't want to do it, we don't have to do it, you know.
They don't have to be like a year or anything.
Um, I mean, you, you're, you, you definitely, I mean, you, you use them on a year-to-year. You bid it out every five years, but they're, they're going to do what we want to do. I mean, our cooks are gonna still be our cooks. But like, and like Matt, so they will bring in, and like I said, and this was something that we had talked to about the food quality, cause some of the cooks have said, you know, hey, you know, they like, especially the cooks that have been here a long time, you know. Um, and again, it goes back to food costs, but like, so they can bring in, you know, and they will, they'll bring in a chef for one year and they'll teach them all kinds of recipes. Um, you know, we have a fresh fruit and vegetable grant, so they can um, you know, use that, you know, like I said, they can have like fresh salads. They can also prepare meals for the teachers. I mean, there's a lot of things that, you know, we just, right now, aren't offering, you know.
Food costs have gotten so.
Food costs are definitely.
What we're doing is heating up.
For.
We are. Personal meals.
Yeah.
And, you know.
You only have, and.
Kids won't buy it then, which means you can't, you're, you can't make your money back, you know.
Yeah, and I think so, and I, I had talked to Matt a little bit before about this too. It's like, there's usually only two companies that, when you actually bid out your food, you know, your, your day-to-day food, like there's Gordon, there's US Foods. So really, they pretty much have the monopoly on us when they know the size of our district, you know, but yeah, the food costs are just through the roof. I mean, the benefit costs are too, but you know, really our staffing levels, we can't really.
Yeah, we're.
Send them down, so. And we've tried and tried to look at ways that, you know, we can do it and.
But the staff, the, the cooks stay the same. They're still under the union agreement. They.
So there's just one position.
Yeah, the manager they hired is from Barnesville.
Yeah, well, the manager, um, that, that they would like to place here, she lives in Cambridge. She trained at Barnesville Schools for a year. Um, uh, you know, but I mean, she's, she's definitely involved in Urnsey County. Um, cause said, the, the, you know, they work at Noble. I mean, we talked to Noble Local, we've, you know, we've talked to East Curzey. We've talked to a lot of districts. I mean, they're, they're Mideast. I mean, they, they're all happy with them, you know, so I mean, that, but yeah, I know, like Aramark and those ones, you know, they're definitely, I mean, I talked to Marietta City, they don't like certain.
I think they're all one and the same.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely some that, you know, some are better than others, but like I said, you know, I, I personally feel they have a lot to offer, just, you know, I mean, again, we always like local control of everything, but you know, I think this would still give us flexibility. I know, I'm not saying that we can control every little thing, because again, they are a business, but they're still our employees and I think that's the most important for the, I mean, our actual cooks are, you know, and I think that was something.
And uh, didn't like a manager they sent and they just, they changed.
And they did, and they did, you know.
They can do.
They had a disagreement and they talked to them. They made it through the year and um, you know, it's.
So they work for us. I mean, they're gonna.
Essentially, because.
They're not gonna be here.
Well, they have to keep bidding and, you know, it's a year-to-year process.
Yeah, and the, and the state is, it's highly regulated. I mean, we have to keep getting state approval, every stuff along the way that we've done so far, you have to continue to, you know, they, they review your menus and.
So explain since K through twelve this year, correct, is free.
Free.
Yes.
So where do we endure the cost then? I mean.
Food costs and staff.
Just the food costs and staff.
And staffing, yeah, which the.
And we're at a weird size where it takes a lot of employees, but you don't have as much, you know, you're, you, you don't have as many kids to go.
So even though the state, so.
And we still have a lot of people with benefits and a lot of schools have moved away from that, like, well, we're not giving benefits.
And our benefits for, for the cooks especially, they are very, you know, I mean, it's a Cadillac plan for sure. I mean, you're almost paying double for benefits what you do in salary.
But we've tried really hard not to get benefit positions, but then it bites you when it comes down to benefits.
When you have five suffer buildings, you always have to have that leap. And you, and you, again, and you know, we are a large employer and we have to, you know, kind of respect that too, you know, so, you know, that's why we're kind of trying to tread lightly on it, you know, but.
I, I understand and, and my take was just like, and it's not that, I'm sure Brad doesn't trust you, but I, I just like, well, you know, this isn't my cup of tea, but you had a good point when you talked to me about it. It's like just experience. I have no experience with these guys, but you know, I gotta, personally, I gotta, I gotta hope these. Yeah, I know you do.
Savings and so.
You got first-hand experience.
Yeah, I, I, I did look up in the past ten years, you know, from the, from the general fund of food service, you know, it's been over seven hundred and twenty-five thousand transferred, so you know, I just kinda, you know, and the food service programs should be self-sustaining, you know, I mean, uh, especially now that we're community, you know, our elementary buildings have been, but a lot of it too is just the only way you get that money is if the kids pick up a tray. We have a lot of kids that don't pick up a tray every day, cause they don't like the food, you know, so.
Say on this.
Breakfast is the same way, you know, so if they're not picking up a tray, we're, you know, we're preparing the food, the food gets thrown in the trash, we're losing money, you know, so.
For them to.
Yeah, you have, you can only bill for what you serve, you know, so.
No, I, I think it's a good idea. I just, I didn't know anything about it and.
Oh, they're tough decisions, cause you know, there's people behind every decision.
Well, and we're only, right now, the, the, the situation is we're only gonna be, it's gonna affect one employee, correct?
Right.
Right now, it's just one employee, which.
Unfortunately.
That's unfortunate. That's very unfortunate, but it's also, you, you gotta, you gotta pay your bills. You gotta, you know, we gotta be as efficient as we can.
Well, and, and two, I mean, and like you said, COVID, it, they, they gave you a lot of subsidies, so that kind of saved the kitchen. I mean, it, it was starting to bleed, but it's really was bleeding this year, cause the subsidies are gone. Like I said, you know, in twenty-one, af- after COVID, we only transferred fifteen thousand. This year, we transferred two hundred and twenty-five thousand, you know, that's the difference, because you lost all your subsidies. Um, so.
I don't see a negative. I mean, I, I, like I said, I respect your, your opinion on it. I do. I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought it up.
Right, if it was the same way the state was, I, if it was set up the same way the state was, I would be very concerned with it.
And I believe the, I believe the state is.
Smoking the front end of it.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of these programs and like you said, in like in Pennsylvania, and in Ohio too, but like in the prisons and that, like the entire kitchen, the entire food service is ran by a company, you know. We're not giving up a control of our staff.
This is a management company.
So, you know, or in, we still have the oversight, you know.
Did you have experience with this in your past job then, being an auditor? Did you?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, there's several sources. We never, and I, and I will be completely honest, um, you know, I, we dealt with the nutrition group and the other companies. Those were the audits that never had issues from a nutrition cluster point of view, because they have a dedicated team.
That's what they do.
Back there. That's all they do and they have, they have the support. And so I talked to Devin too. We don't have, you know, we're, we're, you're setting someone up for failure when there's only one person that, you know, there's no one else for them to rely on, whereas they have the experts that they can call, you know. I mean, there's, there's a lot involved in the food service program. I mean, it, it's.
Especially on the financial side.
So yeah, the financial side, the, the amount of bills, you know, the claims, you make sure everything's covered. You gotta have, you know, you have EMAs, you got students coming and going, you gotta give, if the forms aren't submitted, then you know, like, you know, those free lunch forms at the beginning of the year, that's a big, I mean, there, there's a lot of things.
I give you credit, cause this, this, I think this is a great, um, I think it's a great step. I mean, virtually, with your, with your experience in the past, being an auditor, you've seen what schools go up against.
I've seen schools that have ran it themselves that have been, uh, issue after issue, you know, and I know what can happen, you know, what can go wrong, you know, and you don't want to ever jeopardize your federal funds, you know, you don't want to ever get involved in O D E. And I would feel comfortable working with them and knowing that we're not gonna end up having issues, you know, because.
And I like the fact that.
We have had issues here in the past when it comes to auditing the, you know, the um, food service program, yes, you know, and a lot of it's just rules change and we don't have a compliance person like they do that knows, like, hey, you gotta do this, you gotta change that, you know.
Well, I, I'm gonna bring it to vote. Is that, you, okay. I, I just, you know, I gotta make a decision, so. I'll, we'll bring it to vote. I don't think there's no point in table, no, I mean, if you, you know, I'll respect Brad, you know, you know that, we respect whatever. All right, do we have a motion for item M?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
No.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moos?
Yes.
All right. Good discussion, guys. It was.
Thank you.
Good discussion. All right, uh, no, no, no new business. Yeah, nothing else. All right, we're gonna go into executive session to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes and to discuss details relative to the security agreements and emergency response protocols for the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to go into ex- and there'll be no?
No, no, no business after.
No business after, so you don't have to hang around or no?
Thank you guys.
Thank, hey, yes, thanks everybody. I can't believe, I can't believe you guys don't business a little while and.